Good evening, everybody. Hopefully you can hear me okay.
Yes.
Welcome to the Policy Committee meeting of Tuesday, December 8th, 2020. I'd ask Trustee Carabella to please lead us in opening prayer.
Thank you. Today, the Holy Father has proclaimed December 8th, 2020, to December 8th, 2021, as the year of St. Joseph. He has chosen the date of today's feast day of the Immaculate Conception to announce the start and the close of this special year. I invite you to pray the Litany of St. Joseph. The initial response is Christ have mercy, and then have mercy on us, and then pray for us. Lord have mercy on us, Christ have mercy on us. Lord have mercy on us, Jesus hear us, Jesus graciously hear us. God, the Father of heaven, have mercy on us. God, the Son, Redeemer of the world, have mercy on us. God, the Holy Spirit, have mercy on us. Holy Trinity, one God, have mercy on us. Holy Mary, pray for us. St. Joseph, pray for us. Renowned offspring of David, pray for us. Light of the patriarchs, pray for us. Spouse of the mother of God, pray for us. Chaste guardian of the virgin, pray for us. Foster father of the son of God, pray for us. Diligent protector of Christ, pray for us. Head of the holy family, pray for us. Joseph most just, pray for us. Joseph most chaste, pray for us. Joseph most prudent, pray for us. Joseph most strong, pray for us. Joseph most obedient, pray for us. Joseph most faithful, pray for us. Mirror of patience, pray for us. Lover of poverty, pray for us. Model of artisans, pray for us. Glory of home life, pray for us.
Pray for us.
Guardian of virgins, pray for us. Pillar of families, pray for us.
Pray for us.
Solace of the wretched, pray for us.
Pray for us.
Hope of the sick, pray for us. Patron of the dying, pray for us.
Pray for us.
Terror of demons, pray for us. Protector of holy church, pray for us. Lamb of God who takes away the sins of the world, spare us, oh Jesus. Lamb of God who takes away the sins of the world, graciously hear us, oh Jesus. Lamb of God who takes away the sins of the world, have mercy on us, oh Jesus. He made him the Lord of his household and prince over all his possessions. Let us pray. Oh God, in your ineffable providence, you were pleased to choose blessed Joseph to be the spouse of your most holy mother. Grant, we beg you, that we may be worthy to have him for our intercessor in heaven, whom on earth we venerate as our protector, you who live and reign forever and ever. Amen. St. Joseph, pray for us. Name of the Father and the Son and Holy Spirit, amen.
Thank you, Trustee Carabella. As this is our first policy meeting after the inaugural board meeting, I'll be chairing the first part of the meeting until we select a chair for the committee. So first of all, we do need to approve the agenda for this evening, and I'm going to take the opportunity to request
Request
is added to the agenda, and that would be a discussion item on school uniforms. So that's II-41.
Director Daley.
So moved by Trustee Agnew, seconded by
Trustee Guzzo.
Trustee Guzzo, seconded by Trustee Agnew. Are there all in favor?
I object, Secretary Daley. We've had no prior notice to this matter that you wish to discuss.
Okay, so I'll take it to a vote then. That's okay.
One privilege, again, an echo from Dr. Daley.
My apologies. So I will take it to a vote, if that's okay. So Trustee Yon Tomasi is opposed. Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
Opposed.
Point of clarification, Secretary Daley. I did not oppose. I objected. Somebody's turning me off again. Seems to be a common occurrence at the board.
Okay, so sorry, Trustee Yon Tomasi, you objected to it being added because there was no prior notice?
Correct.
So is that a point of order? You're, like, I'm not sure where we're at.
Yeah, it's an objection to being added to the agenda.
Okay.
Think he's appealing a decision.
No, I'm not doing that, Trustee O'Brien. Don't put words in my mouth. Thank you.
Maybe if I could just explain why we're looking to add it to the agenda. And I know this is probably not proper procedure. We do know that a number of our schools will be coming up to vote on whether uniforms will either be renewed at the school level, or some schools may be choosing to implement a uniform policy or a uniform at the school. In our current policy, we don't have a process to do that electronically. And we do know that at most of our elementary schools, we have students who are in the virtual school. So I just wanted to have some discussion as to how we can make that vote happen at those schools. Because our current policy doesn't really address the current situation that we're in.
May I speak to that, Secretary Daley?
Sure.
Point of order, we're in the middle of a vote.
No, Secretary Daley
Yes, we, Secretary Daley was already taking the vote.
No, Secretary Daley then backed up and said that he wanted to provide
Trustee Yon Tomasi, he was in the middle of a vote.
Let's go back. Yes. Asked Secretary Daley what he asked the board to do before he continued with a vote. In any event, I will continue with what I was saying. All matters that would be concerning changing policies come down from the board. They do not get initiated at the policy level.
Mr. Chair, I think you need to roll on that.
Okay, I'm going to continue with the vote to request an amendment to the agenda, and requesting that a discussion item, 5.3, be added, II-41, I believe, Uniform Policy. So I'll go back to our, I'll restart that vote. Trustee Yon Tomasi.
Opposed.
Thank you. Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
Opposed.
Trustee Uzo?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Duarte?
In favor.
Trustee O'Hern Zernota?
In favor.
Student trustee Roche? Student trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Student trustee Gilbert?
In favor.
Peter, are you, sorry, trustee DeRosa, are you on the line?
He's trying to get in. He said nobody's letting him in.
I've already let him in twice.
Are you there, trustee DeRosa? Just seeing if we can connect with
It's calling.
Just seeing if we can get trustee DeRosa connected. Can we just give us another minute, folks? We're trying to get trustee DeRosa connected with the meeting.
Yeah, it's just not working. It's not even allowing. I don't know why. He may be away from Wi-Fi. I don't know.
A point of privilege, could somebody phone him, or are you in contact with him?
I just texted him.
Thank you.
Okay, I think in the interests of time, Okay, I think in the interests of time, we will move on. The motion to approve the agenda as amended is carried. I have a motion to approve the minutes of the November 10th, 2020 policy meeting.
Duarte.
Moved by trustee Duarte.
I can second it trustee Agnew.
Seconded by trustee Agnew. All in favor?
In favor.
Peter.
Is now joining.
Any opposed?
What are we voting on?
The minutes from the November 10th, 2020 meeting.
Good evening, everybody. Sorry for the technical issues, but I'm here. I can hear.
Thanks trustee DeRosa.
Thank you. Yeah. I abstain.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so the minutes are carried. Item number, sorry, are there any declarations of conflict of interest? Seeing none, we'll move to item 4.1, election of the chair of the policy committee. As this is our first policy committee meeting, we are a trustee to assume the position of chair of the policy committee should a vote by ballot become necessary this evening. Superintendent Bakich will act as a scrutineer while I tabulate the ballots. Trustees who are present at the meeting by electronic means and who choose to vote may at the time the votes are being cast, cast his or her vote by means of either a private telephone conversation or by email with the scrutineer. We shall make the vote on a paper ballot in the same form and manner as though the ballots have been marked in person by the voter. And the ballots shall then be included with the other ballots to be counted. Ballots cast electronically in this matter are subject to the same obligations of confidentiality on the part of the scrutineers those cast by voters physically at the meeting. A nomination for the position of chair of the policy committee must be duly moved and seconded and received by the secretary of the board. So I will ask for nominations to come forward. Trustee Agnew, you have your hand up.
Yes, thank you through you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to nominate trustee Guzzo for the position of policy chair.
Thank you trustee Agnew. Do we have a seconder?
I'll second that.
I'll second.
Trustee Murphy, second. Trustee Guzzo, do you accept the nomination for the position of chair of the policy committee?
I do, thank you very much.
Are there any other nominations for chair of the policy committee? I'll ask again if there are any other nominations for position of chair of the policy committee. And a third time, are there any further nominations to come forward?
No, it's been.
Seeing no further nominations, may I request a mover and a seconder to close the nominations for the position of chair of the policy committee.
I move.
Moved by trustee Duarte.
I can second trustee Agnew.
Seconded trustee Agnew. Trustee Agnew has moved that trustee Guzzo be nominated for the position of the chair of the policy committee for the period December 2020 to the first board meeting in December 2021. The nomination was seconded by trustee Murphy. All in favor?
Favor.
Favor.
In favor.
In favor.
Any opposed?
Favor.
Seeing none opposed, congratulations trustee Guzzo. I invite Madam Chair to preside over the remaining items on the agenda.
Thank you Director Daly and thank you to my fellow trustees. I just wanted to say I look forward to a third year of serving on as policy chair. And I hope to continue to facilitate fair, wholesome, respectful discussions. Working in an impactful way to make changes that have student success and achievement as our main focus always. And that being said, we'll move on to item, action item 4.2, policy II dash 1.7 pastoral reference. Can I have somebody move that the policy committee recommends that policy II dash 1.7 pastoral reference be forwarded to the December 15th, 2020 regular board meeting for approval? Trustee Agnew moves, seconded by.
Murphy.
Superintendent O'Hara, I'll pass it over to you to give some information.
Thank you Madam Chair and through you, the policy before you of pastoral letters of reference has only some minor housekeeping changes. You'll see that in the, in the report we've added in, or DCE under pastoral reference to be consistent with the requirement that all teachers and DCEs provide pastoral letters of reference for hiring. Other than that, they are just again some minor date changes. So subject to any questions, that's all.
Thank you Superintendent O'Hara. I'll open up the floor for questions. Give me one second. Is it possible to get the actual policy up on the screen with the changes? If you can just bear with us for one second trustee Duarte, until we get that up and then you can have the floor. Thank you. Trustee Duarte.
To Madam Chair, just a question to, to Executive Officer O'Hara. I see that we have designated ECEs there along with teachers. But my question was, why don't we have EA's there too? I, I think I know the answer, but I'd like, like some little more clarification on that.
Again, thank you and through the, through the chair. Essentially, you know, we do have denominational rights in our hiring and those denominational rights are centered around the delivery of the curriculum. And so we do have many employees who are employed by us who are not Catholic. And they don't, do not deliver actual curriculum to students. And therefore are not in the same rights as we do with DCEs. In terms of insisting that they be Catholic and practicing Catholic.
Madam Chair, follow up please.
Yes, go ahead.
So, thank you Madam Chair. So the, just to follow up on the same question. So in that case, why don't we have SOs here? Because they are basically delivering curriculum to kids if at all required. Or some other consultants maybe. So that should be the same in the policy too, right? Superintendent O'Hara.
Thank you. And through the chair, certainly teachers would be broadly considered to also include supervisory officers. And again, it's not all supervisory officers. It would be those who are responsible and oversee curriculum. So for example, many boards have in the past had their superintendent of business to be a non-Catholic. Again, there's, there's no requirement for that particular position, for example, to, to be a Catholic. Certainly in our longstanding practice, we have had Catholics in that role, but if it was put to a test on the Human Rights Code, it's, it certainly would, could be challenged. So certainly teachers here would capture all academic superintendents as well.
Thank you.
Thank you Superintendent O'Hara. Trustee Duarte, did that answer your question?
Yes, Madam Chair, for now.
Okay, okay. Trustee Carabella, you have the floor.
Thank you through Madam Chair. A little bit of a follow-up maybe on trustee Duarte's questions about the higher sort of leadership. So there are other positions as well that we have that aren't that I don't know if they have pastoral letters or if you have to be a Catholic. So those leadership positions such as the Equity Officer is one, I think, and some others. So I'm, I'm wondering, and now you referenced the Human Rights Act. So who, who are we at the board required that they're practicing Catholics? Who would be the full scope of this policy?
Superintendent O'Hara.
Thank you Madam Chair and through you. Again, this, this policy is dealing with the hiring of, of teachers and DCEs. And so that certainly would continue into academic superintendents who are teachers. And so certainly anyone also who's being promoted into any leadership academic position as part of a different policy that we have requires all those individuals to be practicing Catholic and provide updated pastoral letters of reference. So certainly, we continue to go and ensure that people that are being promoted through the system are still practicing Catholic. Outside of, again, those individuals, we do have to follow the Human Rights Code, Ontario Human Rights Code, which gives Catholic boards the right to discriminate in its hiring for certain positions. Certainly the case law wouldn't support positions that are outside of the academic stream.
Trustee Carabella, do you have a follow-up question?
Thank you. No, thank you.
Okay, do, is there, there seem to be no more questions? We'll take it to a vote. Trustee Carabella.
Madam Chair, I had my hand up.
Oh, I apologize trustee Ian Tomasi, it's hard to see because you, you were on my minimal screen there. Go ahead, you have the floor.
So through you Madam Chair, so there's human rights issues. As part of this particular, human rights and other legislation that are part of this particular policy, why do we not have reference to which legislation we're abiding by as part of the policy as we do with all our other policies? That question is to Executive Officer O'Hara.
Sorry, can I, can I just ask for a clarifying, can you just clarify that trustee Ian Tomasi? Because I'm not sure I understood the question. So you're asking if, why the human rights?
No, what I'm saying to you is there.
And that's why I'm asking for you to clarify.
So this is what I'm trying to do. My question was, given that all our policies give reference to meeting legal requirements, and there is legislation that overrides or we're in keeping with, with this policy, I'm asking why the legislation that pertains to this policy is not included as part of the policy as we do with all other policies?
Superintendent O'Hara, do you want to take that one? And can I just ask that the policy be brought back up onto the screen, please?
Thank you Madam Chair and through you, we could certainly go and add the Education Act and the Ontario Human Rights Code to the associate, what they, to list of, of relevant pieces of legislation. So certainly that's not a concern for me. I will certainly add that in to, as a change.
Sorry, can I just ask, sorry trustee Ian Tomasi, do you have a follow-up question?
No.
I, sorry, so I'm just going to ask a question Superintendent O'Hara. If we put it in though, but we're not talking about those positions that don't require them to have a pastoral letter. So would that be relevant to this piece?
As I understand it, again through you, I understand that trustee Ian Tomasi wanted to make a reference to denominational rights where that comes from. And so that would be section 19.1 of the Human Rights Code. And it's also referenced in the Education Act. So we can certainly put those, you know, those two pieces of legislation, essentially that does give Catholic boards in Ontario the right to request and to, to discriminate in its hiring of Catholics.
So we would put that in the requirements piece? Not in references or?
Yes, I believe that the other, other policies would have a reference, associated reference to legislation. So we could certainly add that in.
Does anybody objected, have an objection to adding in a reference to the Ontario Human Rights Code? The particular reference to the pastoral rites and the Education Act? Okay, so Superintendent O'Hara.
I would like to say, but, but I'm not sure we need the Ontario Human Rights Commission in there. I think the Education Act would be enough. I mean, I, I don't see any reason to put it in. I, I think this policy stands good as it is, myself.
Okay. So trustee Agnew agrees. Okay, so maybe let's look at it a different way here. Can everybody hear me okay? My computer's just frozen for a second.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, okay. Sorry. So trustee Agnew is okay with leaving it as such. So so trustee O'Brien doesn't feel that we need, since I see you have your microphone on, do you, how do you feel?
I agree trustee O'Brien, if you don't, you're a change, you could tell.
Okay. Trustee O'Hearn Zernota, you have the floor.
Thank you through you Madam Chair. Yeah, so I guess I'm a little confused and those references are so important. I just don't know if it belongs in this particular policy since as you had indicated also Madam Chair, that it doesn't really reference any of these particular hirings.
Okay, so you would be fine that it doesn't need to be referenced in here. Trustee Ian Tomasi, have your hand up.
Yes, I do through you Madam Chair. This particular policy does does not speak to hiring practices. It actually has to have some reference that we are meeting the Human Rights Code and we are further, in the Human Ri- Rights Code as an impact on section 19 of the Education Act. We do this with all our policies. I think it's a, it's a good practice to continue including what overarching legislation the particular policy addresses or follow.
Thank you trustee Ian Tomasi, trustee Carabella. Let's, let's be mindful that everybody's entitled to their views. Trustee Carabella.
Thank you. I guess I would like to see the, the sections that are referred. So I'd prefer that the Education Act be referenced and maybe, I don't know which part in the Human Rights Code is necessary. So.
Okay, so I'm, I'm going to go around the table for consensus because I think we have a, a, a mix here. So trustee O'Brien doesn't feel we need to add that in. Trustee Duarte doesn't feel they have to add it in. Trustee Agnew does not feel that we have to add it in. Trustee Carabella and trustee Ian Tomasi would like to see it, see it add in. Trustee Murphy, your thoughts?
I, I don't see the need to add it in. I agree with trustee O'Brien.
Okay, you. Trustee, who am I, trustee O'Hearn Zernota?
Yeah, no, I don't think there's a need to add it in.
Okay, thank you. Trustee DeRosa? So trustee DeRosa is, he's the call-in number, correct? Yeah, trustee DeRosa, are you, did he call, if he called in, he can't do the chat. So right now, we're five to two in that it's not required in. So we'll, we'll go then to a recorded vote in the policy as it's been presented. Trustee Carabella.
I'm going to be opposed for now, thank you.
Okay, Trustee Duarte?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee O'Hern Zernota?
In favor.
Trustee Antumasi?
I'm against with the qualification. My qualification would be to all trustees, where does it state that it's not required?
Trustee Antumasi, I've called the vote. Trustee O'Brien?
I'm in favor of keeping it exactly the way it is.
Okay, Trustee DeRosa? Okay, we still can't, I don't know what's going on there. Trustee?
Chair Guzzo, he has sent me a text, opposed for now, is the text he had sent.
So I don't know that we can, can we accept it? I guess we can accept that it's, we're at policy. So I think it's going to be numerically insignificant anyways. Trustee Murphy?
I'm in favor.
Trustee Gubert?
I'm in favor.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Do we have Trustee Rashdi on here? I don't think I saw him.
No, I don't believe he's on the call.
Okay, so the, the policy as-
Peter?
Is now exiting.
I'm sorry. Did somebody say something? I think Trustee DeRosa exited is what just happened, so. So the policy will be presented to the next board meeting. We're moving on to Item 4.4. Policy IIi-10 Criminal Reference Check, sorry, 4.3. Policy IIi-04 Employee Assistance Program. Can I, has somebody moved that the Policy Committee recommends that Policy IIi-04 Employee Assistance Program be forwarded to the next 2020 board meeting? Trustee Stewart? Seconded by?
All seconded, O'Hern, Zernota.
Trustee O'Hern Zernota seconded, or Zernota. Do we, I will pass this back over to Superintendent O'Hara. And if we, sorry, before you start, Superintendent O'Hara, can I ask that the policy be put up on the screen?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and through you. Staff have reviewed the Employee Assistance Program policy, and you've just made some minor changes. You notice that in the titles, we were calling it Employee, not Employees Assistance Program. And again, that's consistent with how it's generally known and the information that we push out to staff. And again, other than that, there's only minor housekeeping changes. So I'm happy to answer any questions the trustees may have.
Did anybody hear anything I just said, or did I have myself on mute the entire time?
I think you were muted.
Okay, I apologize. Does anybody have any question? I'm so sorry. So seeing no questions, we'll, oh, hand up, is, Trustee O'Hern Zernota, is that a hand up?
Yes, it's supposed to be a hand up, it says hand up, but it is a hand up.
Okay.
Sorry, I don't have my glasses. So through you, Madam Chair, to Executive Officer O'Hara. I don't know if this is the time and place to ask, but I have to ask. I'm used to these programs in my own place of business. Do you find that the EAP in the school board is being used and is effective? I'm just curious, because it's a very fulsome, comprehensive program that I'm used to. So just a comment, I'm just curious.
Again, thank you, and through the chair, our Employee Assistance Program is being used. We actually have a meeting usually in January or February of every year where we would meet with the EAP provider, and they provide us with some details in terms of its usage, certainly. And they break that down by employee group. And so certainly, we talk about its use, any concerns, and how we can go and promote this particular program. In this particular year, because of COVID, we certainly have been increasing and pushing out more information about our EAP program, especially with concerns around employee mental health and the stresses that COVID has brought upon our employees and their families. So we do know it is being used, and again, we do review that annually.
Do you have a follow-up question, Trustee O'Hern Zernota?
No, no, that's wonderful to hear, thank you.
Seeing there are no further questions, we'll go ahead with a vote on bringing this policy to, forward to the next board meeting. Trustee Antumasi?
Abstain.
Abstain?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Is Trustee DeRosa still on your phone? I thought I saw him.
He's at the meeting now, I believe.
Trustee DeRosa? Okay, I'll come back to Trustee DeRosa. Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Duarte?
In favor.
Trustee O'Hern Zernota?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Gubert?
In favor.
And Trustee Kelly?
I'm in favor.
Trustee DeRosa, are you there?
Yes, I am, Madam Chair. I think my technology is finally falling in line. Forgive me, it's 4.4 we're voting on, right? Is that correct?
4.3 Employee Assistance, Employee Assistance Program.
I'm in favor, thank you.
Thank you. That is seven in favor, one abstention. So the policy will be presented to the next board meeting. Moving on to policy, or sorry, action item 4.4. This Policy IIi-10 Criminal Reference Check. Can I have a motion that the Policy Committee recommends that Policy IIi-10 Criminal Reference Check be forwarded to the December 15, 2020, regular board meeting for approval? I'll move it, Trustee Agnew?
Okay.
Sorry, Trustee Agnew, seconded by Trustee Zernota. And I will hand this over to Superintendent O'Hara before we open up the Florida trustees.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and through you. Again, staff have reviewed the current Criminal Reference Check policy, and we're recommending only minor changes to it. Essentially, we have added in true copy slash original when it talks about what we actually keep. And to give you a bit of an explanation on that, we have gone to electronic HR files. And so we scan files, and so a true copy would be a scan of the, of the original. We also, on occasion, have individuals who will ask if they could have the original back, again, so they can use it for other purposes. So we will just make a copy of it or a scan of it and use that for our purposes. Other than that, subject to any questions, that's all.
Thank you, Superintendent O'Hern. I've got Trustee O'Brien first up, and then I see, I think it's Trustee Antumasi has this. You'll be next. Trustee O'Brien?
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair, to Chief Executive Officer O'Hara. Chief Executive Officer O'Hara, I've never worked in human resources, so I'm curious. If a person had a criminal offense held, and it was pardoned, would you and human resources ever know that?
Again, through the, through the chair, if someone has received a pardon, then it would, it should not be showing up on their criminal offense declaration.
So you would never know, correct?
Correct. I would say that would be generally true. We have had some, in some cases, where the Criminal Reference Check has come in and has indicated a pardon. Sometimes it's from a region where, but I would say generally from the police in our area, it would not show up.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have a follow-up, Trustee O'Brien?
At the moment, time, thank you, Madam Chair.
Trustee Antumasi?
Through you, Madam Chair. Has this, to Executive Officer O'Hara, has this policy been vetted to ensure it reflects the current legal wording that comes from the RCMP insofar as meeting all the requirements?
I, Trustee, I'm sorry, Superintendent O'Hara, that question's to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and through you. We did not run this particular policy through legal counsel. We have in the past, in this particular review, we did not. It was just a staff review. That would be subject to the will of the board if they feel that this needs to be reviewed through, through legal. Again, the basis for this all comes under Regulation 52101 of the Education Act, which hasn't changed. But again, if that's the will of the board, we can certainly take this through legal counsel for review.
Do you have a follow-up question, Trustee Antumasi?
Yeah, so you're actually telling me then that this particular wording, current wording, meets the latest requirements as handed down by both the Police Department, the Education Act, federal legislation? Yes or no, it's all I needed to know.
I'm just waiting to be recognized.
Sorry, Superintendent O'Hara?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and through you. Certainly, it's my understanding that this policy that's before you meets those requirements, as I've indicated. We did not push this through legal, and if it's the will of the board, we could certainly do so.
Thank you, Superintendent O'Hara. Trustee O'Brien, do you have a follow-up question?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, in relation to my first question. To Chief Executive Officer O'Hara, if a criminal records check did indicate that there was a pardon, would that in any way affect the decision of hiring?
Thank you, yeah, thank you, Madam Chair, and through you. I would say generally, no. The information where we've had issues around pardon is usually been around, you know, drunk driving. And so we haven't come across anything that has been so significant that we had concerns, but that would always be a possibility. But as I've indicated, they've always been relatively minor thus far. And in most cases, we wouldn't know about a pardon.
Okay.
Do you have a follow-up, Trustee O'Brien?
No, just a comment. I really think that's a good way to, way to go with this. I believe if a pardon was made, and since mercy is at the heart of our faith, I think we should follow suit. If a judge gave a pardon, I, I think it's only right that we would do the same, no matter what the offense was. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other questions, trustees? Seeing none, I'll take it to a recorded vote. Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee? Trustee DeRosa?
Opposed, subject to the vetting of legal counsel.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee O'Hern Zernota?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Duarte?
In favor.
Trustee Antumasi? Trustee Gubert?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
The policy will be brought forward to the next board meeting for final approval. Thank you, trustee. So that completes our items. We're moving on to item 5.1, Trustee Code of Conduct. I'll hand this over to Director Daley.
Thank you, and through you, Madam Chair. Trustees will recall at the last policy meeting, this was also a discussion item. And I brought forward a couple of examples of trustee codes of conduct from a number of other Catholic boards that were provided to us through Oxta. Also had made reference to a sample enforcement process that has come through the trustees' associations. At the time, trustees asked if we could kind of look at the information a different way. So the chart that's provided, it lists the various elements of the sample enforcement process, how our current trustee code of conduct lines up with it, and then how the other boards that were presented line up with it. And you'll see that where the gaps are, if we want to call it that, where the gaps are in our policy have to do with really kind of the procedural elements of, of the code of conduct or breaches of the code. In terms of the other examples that were provided by Oxta, the Hamilton Catholic Board essentially follows that enforcement process that's outlined by the trustees' associations, and then the other two boards have elements of it. You'd also note that in terms of what's in the ED Act, that's the bolded and underlined parts of the, of the chart, our policy does speak to those elements. So in that respect, certainly, the policy does meet the requirements of the ED Act. What our policy does not have in it is some of those, is both the informal, informal complaint procedure, and also some, some different items around, you know, whether it's a majority vote or a two-thirds to vote at various points in the process. So I just offer this as some additional information for trustees. And some boards have the procedural elements incorporated into their policy. Other boards have a separate addendum to the policy that essentially follows that sample enforcement process. So I'm just offering this as information. And that's my report.
Thank you, Director Daley. Thank you for putting this together for everyone. We'll start the discussion off with the Trustee O'Brien. Trustee O'Brien, you have the floor.
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair. I'd like to speak to one of the enforcement's suggestions. And it says, this, it says, "An allegation of a breach of code of conduct must be brought forward to the board of trustees' bill later than six weeks after it becomes known to the trustees reporting the breach." I like the idea of a time window. However, I would like to extend this to a year. The reason I say this, because if you look at the document later on, it mentions that a breach cannot be brought forward during the time of an election. Well, since our elections start as early as June, or sometimes go to October, a six-week maximum timeframe could possibly give a trustee carte blanche to make every breach they wanted to in that election period, and never be held accountable. So to me, a year would eliminate that problem and maybe prevent a trustee from feeling compelled, and also would make a trustee, prevent them from feeling compelled to actually get out of that six-weeks window. And that's just my view on that. I like that idea of a window, but I think six weeks is just too tight.
Thank you, Trustee O'Brien. That's definitely something to take into consideration should we move to further, move forward with, with a guideline on how to deal with complaints. Trustee Antumasi, do you have a ques, do you have your hand up, or is that from the previous question?
No, I have my hand- Well, I have my hand up through you, Madam Chair. This question goes to Secretary Daley. So when we chose the comparative boards that we're looking at, can you please speak to Toronto District School Board, why they don't have certain formal processes in place and how they address them, which is different than other boards? And the reason being is that they have legal counsel, 365 days of the year on staff, along with an integrity commissioner, which would preempt them from going through the procedures that they don't seem to be showing on their code of conduct policy. If, if, if you've had occasion to discuss it with people at Toronto Districts, Catholic District School Board and discuss the reasons for it.
So I think the ask was trustee Antomasi, I will defer to Director Daley to see if he can answer on behalf of another board. But the ask that we, we asked for him to do was to identify any boards that would have a process and to put a chart together for us. And that's what he's done. But Director Daley, if you feel like you'd like to, if you know the ins and outs of Toronto District, I'll let, I'll defer to you to answer.
Thank you. And trustee Ian Tomasi makes a good point in terms of how other boards may deal with the process internally. I'm not, I'm not familiar with the process that Toronto Catholic uses to, I either follow through or, or kind of avoid those situations. The documents that I looked at were just the public facing documents that they have. So I don't know, I am, I, I do know that the Toronto Catholic Board does have, as trustee Ian Tomasi's pointed out, legal that, that's associated with the board at all times. So that might be the way they do it, but I, I couldn't answer beyond that. Sorry about, sorry about that.
Thank you Director Daley. Trustee DeRosa, you have your hand up?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, thank you Director Daley for putting this chart up. I think it makes it clear and, and easy to follow. Some of the, some of the thoughts that, as I was going through it, that came is the comparability of the boards that we are actually being compared to. And to trustee Antomasi makes a very good point about having legal counsel in-house versus not. And have we, have we considered or have we vetted this through some authority, either through a parliamentarian or through a legal, to see what water, what waters we're, we're charting here? Because the ultimate importance of this, of this policy and these procedures and the consequences of it. I'm wondering whether, I'm wondering whether that would be something that we might want to do.
Is, trustee DeRosa, is that a comment or is that a question?
It's a question. It's a question. Have we, have we sought legal counsel to put this, this chart together?
Well, we're, we're not even at putting a process together. This was simply the ask from trustees, because as discussed at the last policy meeting, this really isn't a staff initiative. The, the trustee code of conduct belongs to the trustees. But we had asked Director Daley to provide other boards that had a further process and to do, which he did at the last meeting. And then it was asked that he put it into a chart, which he has done on our guidance. So we haven't directed anybody to get legal. We're not even at a process of putting something in place yet. This is still at the discussion point.
That was my question, Madam Chair. Thank you very much. And I would say, just as a comment, is that we seriously consider moving forward with the guidance of legal on such a matter. Thank you.
Trustee O'Brien, you have the floor.
Thank, thank you through Madam Chair. I'd like to speak to another one of the enforcement suggestions. It talks about an informal inquiry or informal investigation. And I kind of like that idea. I mean, the, our trustee could be causing a breach out of, and not even knowing it. I mean, take myself for example, being the loud, insulting person that I am, I may be doing this and not even knowing it. And if the chair would just give me a phone call and just say, you know, trustee O'Brien, stop shouting and screaming, I would be aware of my behavior. And I think that's what I would need. And I like that informal approach. However, later on, it does say that if the chair and the vice chair cannot agree, it should go to a formal inquiry. I think if you're going to err on the side of, of acquiring, you should err on the side of the informal, because it does give the apparently perpetrator trustee, you may call them, a chance to kind of look at their own behavior first. Because I think a formal one should be when a trustee consciously knowingly commits a breach. That's just my opinion. Just put that out to my fellow trustees. Thank you.
Thank you trustee O'Brien. I think these are all great comments in, in, I think if, if we do move forward with, further into a process when a code of conduct is identified. And trustee Antomasi, do you have your hand up again?
Through you, yes, I do. Through you, Madam Chair. So it seems to be upon close review of all of the samples and the procedures that other boards follow, it lacks the new requirements, or they don't follow the new requirements that are, that have, that the province has since mandated. And that is to go the route of the integrity commissioner. So when I look at all the checks and they don't relate back to the role of an integrity commissioner, I would think that this document, and I know it's just a collection of what other people are doing, is somewhat antiquated because the province is moving towards increased reliance on the integrity commissioner, commissioner, which would then follow completely different processes, which are quasi-legal. And they would implement those as opposed to any trustee code of conduct that we could put together. That was just a comment.
Thank you trustee Antomasi. Is there any other questions trustees? Trustee Carabella?
Thank you through you, Madam Chair. I do like what trustee Antomasi was just saying about an integrity officer. I think it would, you know, again, if it's between informal, maybe that's a local, but if it got formal, an integrity officer would have that objective capacity. So I'm interested in, in that process, having an integrity officer involved. Thank you.
Thank you. So trustees, I will put this out to you. Oh, we've got another, sorry about that. Trustee O'Brien, you have the floor.
Thank you through Madam Chair. I really feel that this is a, a good thing to look at now. And I'm glad it was brought up by, I believe it's trustee Agnew. It is definitely needed. The fear, I believe would be in, and correct me wrong, would that, the process that brings them forward might not be used in a, a way that actually shows integrity itself. And that, the fear of somehow being used to weaponize. And I think if we really had an airtight procedure to bring this, it would really avoid that. I, I really look forward to seeing what trustees say about how we can, how we can do this. I, I, I think we have to do it, but the more airtight this procedure could be, I think the more effective it would be and the better feeling that we'd be around the board about safety of actually having a safe discussion. Thank you.
Thank you trustee O'Brien. Is there any other questions trustees? Trustee DeRosa?
Thank you, Madam Chair. More of a comment than, that resonates a lot of what's being said. And that's, I think we have to take great care in, in developing this, that we don't set, set the board up as, as a jury over, over things that they're really not competent to do. It's important to keep a certain amount of arms length through this process for a number of reasons. One of them being, being potentially exposing it to liability. The other, so I would strongly support the idea of an integrity commissioner, some form of third party, that is, at arms length to adjudicate the cases. Thank you.
Trustee Agnew?
Thank you through you, Madam Chair. And just to comment, I don't have a question, but however we move forward with this, I think the spirit behind this is just ensuring that we have a mechanism where trustees feel comfortable if they do feel that there has been a breach, that they can bring that forward and that we have a clear process to follow, to make sure that we're doing our due diligence in, you know, looking into any of those complaints that might come forward. So I think the idea is whether we, you know, I do like the idea of the informal piece. I don't think that people are intentionally, you know, trying to breach a code of conduct. I think a lot of it is through a learning process. But perhaps that will feed into a more formal piece, because I do think we have to have something formal at the end of it with, you know, how complaints are dealt with. But however we decide to move forward with this, I just think it's important that we do come up with something that is fair, it's equitable, it's transparent. And again, there's a comfort level for trustees to come forward without fear of repercussion if they do need to bring something forward. And that whoever the complaint is coming forward to, whether it be the chair or be the entire board of trustees, that they feel comfortable that the steps they're taking are the right steps. So again, I don't know how, you know, we move forward with that in a fluid way, but that's my hope behind the, this, the whole spirit of this policy.
Thank you trustee Agnew. Trustee Antomasi?
Through you, Madam Chair. So a code of conduct has to have a procedure, which is what we're after here. The procedure is a legal procedure. It doesn't change. So there are certain required steps. It would seem to me that this is really out of our hands in the sense that this is something that legal would have to impart upon us, because I don't know what the legal, the proper legal procedure to investigate something is. So I would rely on legal again. Thank you.
Thank you trustee Antomasi. Is there any other comments? So seeing that we're at the discussion point of this, the next step is, is it's up to trustees on whether or not we want to further explore a procedure and how we go about doing that. I will leave that to trustees to decide. It is just a discussion item, not just, but it is a discussion item at this meeting, which means no action is required. However, if we do feel that we want to move forward, or if a trustee wants to move forward in putting together some sort of procedure that follows the trustee, okay, trustee code of conduct, we, you know, everybody has that right to do that. Trustee Duert, sorry about that. You have the floor.
Madam Chair, we also talked about the option of, of adding on the bylaws. So is that off the table? Are we looking at doing only a procedure, a separate procedure altogether and not considering expanding the bylaws and what we talked about before?
I think, I think trustee Duert, I think really it's the will of the trustees on how we move forward. The bylaw review has kind of been stagnant. So we really haven't done much with that. So I don't know, know that other trustees entertain in regards to just adding to that portion. But this actual policy stands alone as well. It's, part of it is in the bylaws, but then further detail is in the actual policy. So this, I don't know that a procedural part would belong in the bylaws. Does that make sense? But again, it's the will of the trustees on how, how everybody wants to proceed.
Let's go around the table then plan out, Chair?
Yeah, absolutely. If, if, if we want to take, like, take a vote in regards to how we proceed, if we want to move forward with putting together a procedure, I'd be more than happy to facilitate that. So let's start with you trustee Duert. Are you in favor?
Yes, yes, we can go with the procedure correct. Thank you.
In favor, trustee O'Brien?
I'm in favor.
Trustee O'Hern Zernota?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
I'm going to be opposed because of, like, some legal advice. Thank you.
Trustee Mur-
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee DeRosa?
I, I think we should turn it over to some legal third party. So I'm against, I'm opposed.
Thank you. The question is, are you in favor or are you opposed? So trustee Antomasi?
Sorry, my apologies, Madam Chair. We are in favor or opposed to what?
Moving forward with putting together a further procedure in dealing with the complaints.
Absolutely not.
Okay, opposed. Next trustee Gubert?
I'd be in favor.
Thank you. Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Okay, so the majority-
Majority-
Majority, Madam Chair, just before you give the verdict, I have a small query.
Sure.
So trustee Carabella brought a good point of going to legal. Is there an option of going to legal after we have the procedure and just take it to legal and get it vetted by them? Is that going to be an option for us?
I think that that's always an option, but I think going to legal before we even look at a procedure is, is kind of where the feeling that I'm getting with the trustees is, we don't actually even have something. So I'm not sure what we would be going to legal with.
Thank you.
Okay. Trustee Agnew, is that just, do you agree?
Yes, Madam Chair. Just that I would agree that. I don't, I don't think anyone's saying that we don't feel that we need someone else to review, but I think the starting point is with us as far as, we do have some point of references here. We do have, you know, some things that we can consider to put together. And then whether we decide to have that reviewed by an integrity commissioner or by a lawyer or someone else. But I think the brunt of the work begins with us as far as putting together, you know, a shell, if you will. And then, I mean, at this point, there's nothing for legal to review and, and I don't know that they need to create the policy for us. But if the will later on is to have it reviewed, then I don't think there's an issue with that.
Okay. Trustee O'Brien?
Okay. Thank you through Madam Chair. I brought the question, is it possible to have someone on standby as we go through the discussion, like as we have with parliamentary on standby, as sometimes we have had with legal on standby? Just to ask them a question as we go along. I, when I voted for this, I in no way saw a legal person being excluded even from the conversation. I just, I'm in voting in favor of having the procedure started and having it separate from the bylaws. But I don't see why a legal representative can't be even close to us or to take questions. So.
Trustee O'Brien, I, I agree with you. And I think that's what trustee Agnew just said as well, is, is let's start working on this and putting together. I think the idea and the spirit is, is to put something together before it's actually passed and put into place. We always have the option to consult. But to say, let's go out to legal first to do a process for us, I think is, is not, is not productive. And it's not, definitely not cost-effective. If we have lawyers creating all of our policies, I think everybody around the table, I think we would, that would be something we would have to look at and bring back as, what would the cost be that would surround that?
Trustee Gubert, I agree and I disagree with you. And I agree with trustee Agnew. I just think people talk about before and after. I think there's also an option of having someone there in the present. I think the cost would be worth it. And I'm not saying a person's going to be like a head manning the conversation. I just think somebody that we can easily access at the moment would not, would be very prudent. Because I'm, I'm finding it. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. And I don't think that that's the question. I don't think the point of this whole conversation on whether it's what our next steps are, do we want to move forward with actually putting one in? Nobody is saying, and at this point, that we, we don't, we don't have the option of ever consulting lawyers or legal opinion. Trustee DeRosa?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll pass my turn. I think I've made myself clear. Thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Murphy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think we have to be reminded that the intent is that whether it's right or it's wrong, the order of trustees is self-regulated. We're trying to impose legal statutes on a process that is not, does not have that or is not warranted. By definition, we set the rules of engagement, provided they're not in conflict with statutes or the Education Act. But, you know, let's face it, if you ask a painter if something needs to be painted, guess what? It needs to be painted. Printer's got a print, lawyer's got a lawyer. So this pension or flavor for deferring to lawyers, I think we're going down a dangerous road. Definitely need lawyers where you need them, where there is legal jeopardy, where there is a legal framework or reference. Our policies and procedures, we're self-regulated. We set the parameters and the rules. Doesn't mean we don't get outside advice from, from some experts, but we, we have to keep it in the context and the spirit of what these, these rules are. So that's just the comments I wanted to make.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Trustee Doherty, you have the floor.
Madam Chair, I have nothing really new to say, but I kind of just agree with what Trustee O'Brien said, but we don't, we do not have any framework right now. So once we have some framework, then we can start talking. Just a comment, Madam Chair, nothing else.
Thank you, Trustee Doherty. Trustee DeRosa and then Trustee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just one comment in response to a characterization of the board that Trustee Murphy referred to the board as a self-regulating. Up to some, up to some point, we are self-regulating. There are issues where we don't have jurisdiction over certain things. I would just like to, I would like to proceed with developing something that is appropriate for us, but I would, I would like some clarity at the beginning of that process to see whether, whether this is within our purview or not, in accordance to the act. Thank you.
Trustee Antumasi?
Through you, Madam Chair. So as it pertains to being self-regulated, we're not self-regulated. Everything that is contained in our bylaws is legal and it gets vetted by legal. There are preambles that must be in there, which flow down from all sorts of legislation. For us to embark on writing a preliminary document, which then needs to be vetted by legal, is far more costly than going to legal and asking them to provide us the blueprint to follow and then just insert things that pertain to the board that are specific to our board. That's my comment.
Thank you. So, so we've had a conversation and we've had a consent, a conversation around the table and the consensus is that we'd like to move forward with a more detailed process and I think that we can look at starting that. Director Daley, I'm going to seek your guidance on this, on the best way to approach this, if you don't mind. Would it be best to maybe put together like a draft based on some of these others and we can use that as a working document and send out to trustees for feedback and then have it brought back as an action item?
Through you, Madam Chair. Just so, so trustees are aware, and I'm sure you're, you know, clear that in terms of that kind of the, the reference column there, that certainly, that wasn't me that developed that. It came out of a template from the, the Public Boards Association and it seems to be the template that a number of boards have used. I can certainly forward that template to all trustees as a starting point. It literally is a insert name here sort of template and as Trustee Antumasi suggested that it might be a starting point and then it could be modified for our own board's purposes, but certainly we would, at some point, want to get another set of eyes on it, I would think. So I can easily forward that, that template to all trustees as a, as a potential starting point.
Okay, so back to my original question is if we send that out to all trustees, it can come back as an agenda item and then we can decide how to move forward from that point. Director Daley?
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't know that was a, yeah, that makes, that makes sense to me. Yeah, yeah.
Okay. And, and nobody, again, nobody is saying that we don't want a third set of eyes on it, but the point is, is let's start the process and then decide how we want to proceed. Okay. Thank you, trustees, for that. Oh, I'm sorry, Trustee O'Brien, I did acknowledge and then I forgot about you. Go ahead, you've got the floor.
Madam Chair, I like your suggestion of the director sending out sort of a template with some of these enforcement suggestions on it in sort of an organized way and getting feedback from the trustees. I like that idea too. And maybe I didn't understand this, I heard the word action item. I don't think it should come back as an action item just yet. I think it should come back as a discussion item first. That's just my opinion. Thank you.
I, I, the will of trustees, maybe once we have it sent out and we have a look at it, we can decide on how we put it forward and it can go as, it can go as an information item first with some of the, the draft proposal changes and then we can decide how to move forward from there. So again, it'll be up to, it'll be up to the trustees.
I would see that as being prudent. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So we're going to move on to item 5.2. Thank you for the discussion, everybody. Policy II-45 Equity and Inclusion. And I am going to, sorry, I'm just pulling it up here. I'm going to pass this on to our senior manager of human rights and equity, Seda, and I think she's on the line with us. Seda, are you on?
I am. Good evening and thank you. And through you, Madam Chair. So the purpose of the discussion report is to provide the policy committee with an update on some recent ministry directives and legislative changes that may further, that may require further review of the equity and inclusive education policy. So our ENI policy was, was first developed in 2011 in accordance with the Church's teachings and PPM 119 to provide in all its operations an educational environment which supports and enables diversity and commits to the elimination of discrimination. Since then, a number of significant directives and updates from the Ministry of Education provide the rationale for reviewing our current policy. The current policy does not incorporate all ministry directives and legislative changes to date and the following are some key factors for consideration. So there's the Ontario's Equity Action Plan, which came out in 2017, which provides clear action plans for boards to achieve equity for all students. The Anti-Racism Act of 2017, which has implications for all school boards regarding student data collection and analysis of disparities in outcomes for marginalized students. The Ontario's Action Plan to Address Systemic Racism in Schools, which came out in July of 2020, which has implications for school boards and updates to teacher hiring practices that also came out recently. So in view of the above, updates, global events and the policies relevant for a number of board priorities, including mental health and safe and accepting schools, the ENI policy requires revision.
Thank you, Seda. Did, did, okay, so we're going to start with some questions. Are you, are you ready to go into some questions, Seda, or do you want to go into the policy first?
For bringing the discussion reports, I'm, I'm happy to take questions and answer them to the best of my ability.
Okay, thank you. Trustee O'Brien, you have the floor.
Thank you through Madam Chair and thank you, Seda. I've taken a look at what we have here. I know there's more to follow and I'm really hoping to get into the meat of this as we go along in this discussion and before it becomes an action item. Question, do you, Seda, where do you see the Catholic lens in this? I mean, these are all great things. I could, I could see a lot of very Catholic things myself, but I just want, in your opinion, where do you see the, the Catholic lens in this policy coming forward as opposed to just the non-Catholic lens? How would this differ in our board as in the public board? Can you speak to?
Thank you and through you, Madam Chair. So from the way I understand it, the Catholic lens is really woven throughout the policy and it starts foundationally with the idea that, you know, everybody is made in the image and likeness of God and deserving of human dignity. So that truly threads through everything and that's also written in the, in the Ontario Human Rights Code. That's how I see the connection and, and all other actions are then linked to, are referenced to the denominational rights that are protected and afforded to Catholic school boards.
Thank you. Trustee O'Brien, do you have a follow-up?
No, I'll have more questions as we, as we go along and we get more of the, I mean, I looked at the update in the teacher hiring practices, but I, I believe there is more coming on that one. Am I right, Seda?
Yes. So through you, Madam Chair, so there are more of a finalized PPM coming, but there are, there are some announcements that have been made in terms of some updates.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Trustee O'Brien. Trustee Carabella?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Trustee O'Brien, for bringing up the Catholic lens and hello, Seda, thank you. I'm, so I would like to know whether these are very current, 2017, the Ontario Equity Action Plan and the Anti-Racism Act 2017. Has this gone, have these, what you've mentioned here, have, have these gone through the Institute for Catholic Education? Have they gone through these to really help us make sure that we have a clear Catholic lens to see these items with?
Thank you through you, Madam Chair. I'm actually not aware whether they have gone through ICE or not. I know that the original policy had gone through and the framework had been provided through ICE, but yeah.
So if, if I can have a follow-up, I wouldn't.
Trustee Carabella, and, and we should be mindful of the fact of what Seda's role is in, in, as her role as a manager and that I think she's brought things forward that are specific to ministry regulations and requirements that need to be made.
Thank you, Trustee Guzzo. And also, in light of that, we are in the Catholic School Board, so that's very important to fuse and make sure that the Catholic lens is there. So I would, I would like if we can find out if ICE has gone, done some work on these action plans. I would recommend that. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Agnew. You have the floor.
Thank you through you, Madam Chair. I just want to thank Seda for her work on this, on this policy. It's, you know, I've taken a look through it. I know there's been a lot of work that's been done by yourselves and your staff. I think it's an excellent policy. I really think it hits all of the key points and I don't have any questions for you. I've gone through it and I believe it's fully comprehensive. I think it's a great policy and I just want to thank you for all the work you've done on that.
Thank you. Thank you, Trustee Agnew. Trustee DeRosa?
Thank you, Seda. I want to, I want to express my thanks for the, the great work and the amount of work you've done on this. I think I heard a suggestion that maybe to get the views of, get a vetting on the issue of Catholic lens would be a good idea, would basically put the cherry on, on the cake on this thing, on the excellent work you've done. So it's just a suggestion that maybe we should consider that suggestion.
Madam Chair, I didn't hear a word of that.
I think there was papers rustling.
Not my papers.
So I don't know if somebody, just a reminder, if you're not speaking, if you can keep your microphone off so that the people that are speaking can be heard and the people that they're asking questions to can actually hear the questions that they're being asked.
Trust you, Madam Chair, is Trustee O'Brien the only one who hasn't? I, I'm happy to summarize in 30 seconds.
I did hear you, however, I also heard papers rustling, but I was able to hear you through it. But, but if Trustee O'Brien said he couldn't hear you, if you could please repeat what you just stated?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. In, in a nutshell, I want, I was complimenting Seda for the, the amount of work and the excellent work that she's done. And to top it off, maybe have it, get an opinion on, on, on the issue of reflecting the Catholic lens in this and that would complete, round off the excellent work you've done. Thank you very much, Seda.
Trustee O'Brien, was that better?
Much better. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Is there any other questions for Seda? Oh, I, sorry, I see a hand up. Oh, Trustee Antumasi?
Thank you through you, Madam Chair. So to, to Seda, revocation, Regulation 274, how does that address vetting it through a Catholic lens?
So, thank you for that question and through you, Madam Chair, it's, it's my understanding that it does not go contrary to the denominational rights that are afforded and protected in the Constitution and Section 19 of the Ontario Human Rights Code for Catholic school boards. Some of the updates and refer to, you know, the way of interviewing candidate selection in terms of, you know, how we, how we look for candidates, qualifications and merit, promoting diversity and equity. Right at that, even at the interim, interim policy, it clearly states that this will not be contrary to any of the rights protected and guaranteed within the Constitution for Catholic school boards.
Follow-up through you, Madam Chair. So this particular document that I'm looking at, and I agree, it's, you know, a lot of work, but where is the policy? I fail to see where the policy statement here. I, I see a lot of commentary that alludes to PPM 119, which is 2009. I look at the Ontario Equity Action Plan of 2017, the Anti-Racism Act of 2017 and of course, the 2020 revocation of 274. None of these have been vetted through ICE and I don't know how we can write a policy that has not been vetted through ICE and put into the Catholic context. These are generic statements that are, regulations that are put forward by the Ministry of Education. The Ministry of Education tells us, these are the things we're looking for. Then we do have the right, the denominational right to be able to vet and transfuse this into a Catholic lens. So why wouldn't our policy address that? Why wouldn't you be putting that into a policy statement where you're clearly stating, look, the ministry directives, which relate to legislative changes on equity and inclusion, education policy, which are in keeping with Catholic values and practices that have been longstanding, which are guaranteed? A policy statement should address those very essential parts of who we are as an educational system. We're vastly different than the public system and everything that I see on this document only relays back to, to the public system, not the Catholic system.
Trustee Antumasi, and, and just a reminder, so this is a discussion item and in her commentary right at the beginning, there's a statement that states the Halton Catholic District School recognizes that all people are created equal in the image of God and deserving of dignity. So I think that.
Are you, excuse me, Madam Chair? Your role is not to.
Trustee Antumasi, I have the floor. I would ask.
Point of order, Madam Chair, like if you're going to weigh in on the conversation, I think you need to pass the gavel.
I would be, I'm not waiting and I'm not passing in the gavel. I was actually making a comment about being respectful and if you're going to ask.
I was being respectful, stating facts. I'm dealing with facts.
Ask a question and we will not be interrupting each other and you will be wait, you will wait till you are recognized before you continue to speak.
I had the floor. I had not yielded the floor, Madam Chair.
Trustee Antumasi, you were out of order. You had finished your comment and I had. You had finished your comment and I had resumed control. So I'm going to ask again.
I'm entitled to a portion of clarification, Madam Chair.
Trustee Antumasi, you're out of order. I'm going to move on to Trustee O'Brien. You had the floor next.
Thank you through you, Madam Chair. A question to you, actually, Madam Chair. Will this come back as an action item to the next policy meeting?
As I have just resumed the role of Chair, because I did not have a hand in this last agenda, I don't know that at this point. If it does, it'll be set and everybody will be notified in advance.
Thank you.
Trustee DeRosa, you have the floor.
I'm going to pass, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Trustee Carabella?
Sorry, sorry, I've had trouble with my microphone and my screen. I couldn't find it. So thank you, Madam Chair, for recognizing me. I just think that maybe my question there is, has been effective in, in asking that we do ask, we can easily inquire with the Institute of Catholic Education if they have reviewed those action plans and have suggestions for Catholic boards or maybe even OCSTA might have done some preliminary work on that. I think it can only help us. And then in terms of the, someone saying is the action item or not, I think that there's much still to be discussed to see what would get put on. So I wouldn't recommend it coming back as an action item right away, but perhaps information or some more discussion. Thank you.
Director Daley, you had your hand up?
Sorry, I lost my spot there. Thank you and through you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of things. In terms of ICE's take on kind of some of these contemporary issues, they certainly have commented on them, but we can bring those forward. As Trustee Ian Tomasi pointed out, some of these are very current. So for example, the, the government's action plan to address systemic racism 2020, I don't believe ICE would have commented on that, but certainly around the broader topic of ensuring that all of our students, our staff, our stakeholders feel included within our system, that we eliminate barriers to student success. They certainly would have commented on those in general. With regards to specifics around the Equity Action Plan, we can certainly bring that information back.
Thank you, Director Daley. Trustee DeRosa, you have your hand up?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a very quick comment. I think, I think a review by ICE of the final document would serve to strengthen all the good work that Seda has put forward so far. So I strongly support that vetting. Thank you.
Trustee O'Hearn-Sernota?
Thank you through you, Madam Chair, and to Director Daley. Do you know when we vet through ICE, what the timelines are be to get some sort of a response? Is it days, weeks, months? I just ask because I don't think it's not important, but a lot of these action plans are very important. So I'm just curious as to the timelines.
I, I thank you through you, Madam Chair. I couldn't off the top of my head comment on timelines and, and the role of ICE is really not as a vetting process. The Institute for Catholic Education provides resources, advice, works with the Ontario Catholic Bishops, provides direction. I'm not sure they would see their role as taking policy and vetting it per se, but they certainly would help us along with it for sure.
Thank you, Director Daley, and thanks for the clarification of the word.
Trustee O'Brien?
Okay, thank you through Madam Chair. I got a sense that there is some desire to seek some kind of Catholic lens feedback. I don't know if it's ICE or not, Director Daley is right, but I think maybe some other or a second opinion wouldn't hurt in moving forward. That's just my opinion. Thank you.
Trustee Antumasi?
Through you, Madam Chair. So the part of my question that I, hasn't been answered is, were, Seda, can you just please walk me through what your policy statement is that sets up this policy?
So it's through you, Madam Chair. So when I was looking at the, the policy, the way it is structured is the policy number II45 under purpose, the third paragraph clearly says that here, that HCDSP and its staff are committed to the elimination of systemic barriers as outlined in Ontario's Equity and Inclusive Education Strategy and subsequent strategy and action plan, achieving excellence, a renewed vision for education in Ontario and accepting schools in a manner which is consistent with the exercise of HCDSP's denominational rights under Section 93 of the Constitution Act 1982 and as recognized in Section 19 of the Ontario Human Rights Code. So that's the third paragraph. But even right at the beginning, if you look at the purpose within the policy statement, it says the Halton Catholic School Board recognizes that all people are created equal in the image of God, each with inimitable characteristics deserving of dignity. In accordance with the Church's teachings, it is the policy of HCDSP to provide in all its operations an educational environment which supports and fosters diversity, equity and inclusion within its Catholic community. And so those are some of the references. There's another reference in the second paragraph as well, which talks about, under the purpose in the policy, HCDSP recognizes that any form of discrimination is incompatible with Catholic moral principle and is in violation of the Ontario Human Rights Code. HCDP recognizes that the school system gives preeminence to the tenets of the Catholic faith ongoing with the protection afforded in the Ontario Human Rights Code.
Okay, so point of clarification, I, I'm missing something. So we talk about the purpose and then we talk about commentary. So we're to assume that the commentary speaks to a process and the things that are included in the process. So all I want to know is, where is the policy statement that speaks to this particular policy?
So Seda, do you understand what the question is?
No, if you could please clarify.
Trustee Antumasi, I, Seda doesn't understand as well as I don't understand what your question is.
Well, Madam Chair, it's pretty clear. A policy statement gives you the parameters of which the policy speaks. The only thing that I see here is a purpose to provide the policy committee, that's us, with an update on recent ministry directives and legislative changes that require further review of the equity and inclusive education policy. Where is the policy in that statement?
Sorry, just to clarify, Trustee Antumasi, this isn't the policy here. This is, this has been brought to our attention to let us know that these changes should be looked at in our policy. This isn't actually changes to the policy or recommended changes. This is commentary and Seda bringing this to our attention for us to review or decide what to do.
I don't know where you get the impression that I'm talking about this being a final policy. Our policy, this is II45, Equity and Inclusive Education. There has to be a, we're reviewing what the contents of our policy is going to be. So when we talk about a policy, it has to have the parameters spelled out at the beginning of the policy. If you're telling me this is just a narrative on what will be included in any future policy, well, that's a different story. But that's not what I see here. I see a discussion report that speaks to policy, to our policy committee and we're to review the contents of it. We look at all of these dates, there is information here that's brand new, that has not been vetted by any of the, the people that we rely.
Trustee Antumasi, this, this isn't, this isn't policy recommendations. This has been brought forward for our attention with an understanding that our policy requires us to review it based on some of these things that Seda has outlined for us, which is the Equity Action Plan from 2017, which is the Anti-Racism Act of 2017 and the other items that she has listed. And we have heard everyone's point in regards to ICE and we understand where everybody's position is, but there is no recommended changes at this point. It is simply a discussion item where it has been brought forward so that the trustees are made aware of items that should be reviewed at that policy. So there is no discussion about changes to the actual policy at this time. It is simply a discussion item.
Madam Chair.
Have a question? Do we have any other hint? Trustee Duert, or sorry, I missed you. Trustee O'Hearn-Sernota, you have the floor.
Thank you and through you, Madam Chair. I just really want to say a simple statement that's, you know, really come to the forefront in my mind. Just the name of this report, Equity Inclusive Education, really is a Catholic lens right there. In my opinion, Jesus is the most inclusive person in the world. So I think it is through a Catholic lens, just the name of this policy.
Thank you, Trustee O'Hearn-Sernota. Trustee Duert, you have the floor.
Madam Chair, I think this is very important, important considerations to be made for the policy. My only question here is, to Seda, is, is it possible to run this commentary by Gillian? We have resources in-house and I think as long as we approve, I would be comfortable with that, you know? I really like the work that's done and I'd like to move forward in this.
Yeah, sorry, Trustee Duert, is that a question?
Yeah, question for Seda. Can this commentary be run by our internal resource? We have Gillian available in-house, so can it be run by her and if she approves this thing, I'm good with that.
So through you, Madam Chair. Certainly, I'm, I'm most willing to work with Gillian and I have worked with Gillian Federico in the past as well. Yeah, so I, I think Director Daley has his hand up as well. Do you want to speak to that?
I'll let the Chair.
Sorry, Director, I'm not as quick on the Director Daley, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to make it clear that the commentary that's here, it's commentary because it's, it's a, it's a discussion report. I think what, what's being attempted is just to bring to the consideration to trustees that there have been some events, both worldwide, province-wide, in our own community, that we might want to consider in taking another look at policy II45. This commentary is not to be in the policy. The commentary is to generate discussion. We do have a policy on equity and inclusive education right now. It's a very fulsome sort of policy, but we think based on the direction that the government is clearly taking of events around us, that it'd be worthwhile re-examining II45. That's why the, this discussion report was, was brought forward.
Thank you, Director Daley. I agreed. That is exactly what I understood this brought forward. Trustee DeRosa, I'm sorry, Trustee Duert, did that answer your question?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Trustee DeRosa.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would hate to think that everything that we're doing and all this work that Seda put in and this very informative discussion does end up somewhere and my, my supposition is that eventually the desire will be to, that it, that it ends up in policy. I guess what we're discussing here and I'm, is to make sure that by the time we get to the point where it has to be included in policy, it's been vetted in every possible way we can so that, so that Seda's work is strengthened. So I'm a little, I'm a little miffed by, by, by why that process isn't coming across in the discussions. Thank you.
Trustee O'Brien?
Hey, thank you through Madam Chair and I want to just piggyback on what trustees O'Hearn-Sernota said about diversity being so central to Catholicism. I couldn't agree more. And if you look at the updated teaching hiring practices on the revocation of Regulation 274, there's a great statement in here, the rights of unsuccessful candidates, because I think they often get excluded in this. And in following interview, it says, if a teacher is not placed on a long-term vocational teaching list or assigned to a long-term assignment or permanent position, the teacher is entitled, on request, to meet with the person on panel that conducted the interview to discuss the performance during the interview, measures the teacher could do to enhance professional qualifications and other ways to improve the chance of being successful. I really think that's a, a great statement and we should keep that in mind from that MOE as we move forward in developing this policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee O'Brien. I think we've had a good discussion on this and Seda, thank you very much for providing the commentary and we'll look forward to next steps in regards to this. We have the additional, thank you, Seda, the additional item that was added to the agenda, item 5.3, which is the uniform policy. Director Daley, will you be addressing that?
I can try, yes, I will. Thank you and through Madam Chair and thanks for allowing me just to raise it as a discussion point. So trustees would recall that we did a pretty thorough going over of the school uniform and school dress code last year and it has been updated and there was a lot of work put into that on behalf of trustees, so thank you for that. I just wanted to draw trustees' attentions to the actual process, the voting procedures that the policy outlines for our elementary schools. And I know you don't have the policy in front of you, but I just want to highlight a couple of things that I think we need to think about. So at the elementary level, when there's, when there's a vote at the school level with regards to implementing a uniform, it's pretty prescriptive that ballots go home, they're numbered, one ballot for each family, only original ballots will be accepted, there's no telephone or verbal voting. So we're trying to anticipate at a school, for example, that might have, that might be taking a uniform vote, some of our schools have upwards of 200 students who, rather than being at their homeschool, they're in the virtual school right now, but you know, they'll, they'll be returning back to the homeschool at some point. So we were just trying to determine a method that, you know, students who are students at St. Benedict's but happen to be in the virtual school, how those parents can have their voice heard through the balloting process. And in the current policy, we don't have a mechanism for that. And for either trustees who have been on school councils or trustees that have been around for a while or trustees that have had students, so your kids have been in the system, I think we've had some examples in the past where, when a uniform vote was conducted at schools, in a, in a close vote, sometimes the process is put into question. So we're just trying to kind of take that out of the equation and make sure that the processes that we have in place for any votes that happen this year in our current situation are supported by the policy. So the suggestion or the discussion point would be, should we make an amendment to the policy around how that balloting might happen? And that's all, that's just the only reason why, why I raise it as a discussion point. So thank you.
Thank you, Director Daley. So we've got some trustees who already have some questions, I think, back. We'll start with Trustee Agnew. Trustee Agnew, you have the floor.
Thank you through you, Madam Chair. Thank you so much, Dr. Daley. I'm glad that you added that. This is super important and I've been involved at a council level when these votes have taken, have been taking place as well as from a parent perspective. They, you know, they're, they're important votes, they can be highly charged, they're varied, there's a lot of parents that engage with these. So I 100% would be in favor of amending. So I 100% would be in favor of amending the policy to allow for a different way, uh, for these, uh, families to have their say, to make sure their voice is being heard, um, to make sure that they can cast their vote. So, uh, I don't know that you're, i- if, if the idea then is for staff to come up with the language or the amendment for that, and then for us to review it. But 100%, I think that needs to be done. And again, thank you for bringing this forward.
Thank you, Trustee Agnew. I'll, I'll take that supportive comment as opposed to a question. Uh, Trustee Duert?
Madam Chair, question to Secretary Daley. How many schools are we talking about, uh, coming up for the vote, uh, this year?
Uh, I would, uh, just give me one, uh, one second. I think Superintendent Bickeich can give a bit of a ballpark.
Thank you, uh, through you, Director Daley and Madam Chair. So currently, we have, um, three that have principals who have contacted the, uh, superintendents, to notify that they're going to be on board with their vote. Um, and potentially be one more, but, um, definitely three.
Through you, Madam Chair, I'll just follow up question.
Yeah, go ahead, Trustee Duert.
So my question would be, do we need to amend the policy? Or can we just put a motion on the table to delay, uh, the uniform vote till next year?
Well, I, I guess I can respond to that. I, I don't know whether, um, it's really, I don't know if, if, if trustees want to be telling a particular school community that they, they can't have a vote this year if they, they, they.
Okay, thank you. Madam Chair.
Thank you. Uh, Trustee O'Brien, you have the floor.
Thank you through Madam Chair. I'm all in favor of making this amendment. I think, um, COVID has made us a lot of, a lot of, uh, changes in our lives. And even once it's gone, um, an online vote would be only a good thing in my eyes. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee O'Brien. Trustee O'Hearn Zernotta, you have the floor.
Through you, Madam Chair. So Trustee Duert took both of my questions. But, um, no, I'd be in favor of an amendment.
Thank you, Trustee O'Hearn Zernotta. Trustee Carabella, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for the, uh, the update on the number of schools and the idea of postponing, um, for, uh, another year. I'm just wondering, um, does it have to come to a policy? Or can it be like a temporary procedure because of COVID?
Director Daley, do you want to take that?
Well, uh, the uniform policy is one of those policies that's got quite a bit of procedural things embedded in it. If it was a separate procedure, it would be, um, easy enough to change. But the process is included in the policy.
Trustee Carabella, does that answer your question?
Uh, yes, thank you. And then for a follow-up, though, when we, we make amendments to that uniform policy, does it have to go out for stakeholder feedback? Is that one of those policies that requires that?
I, um, through you, Madam Chair. I would suggest that making a temporary change to how ballots are distributed in the current context would not have to go out to all stakeholders. I don't think it's a radical change to the, to the policy. And, and, um, you know, the, the alternative is, or an alternative is, you say to those parents, you have to physically come to the school, pick up a ballot, take it back. Again, I, I think for some schools, if, if we're trying to limit traffic to schools and access to schools from a kind of a COVID protocol perspective, I don't know if that's the, the best way to do it. But I don't think we would have to send the policy out to all stakeholders for what, what I would see as a temporary change.
Thank you, Director. And just to clarify, the temporary change anyways would only impact those having to do a vote because they don't have uniform, which is, I believe, only four schools.
That's true, yeah. Wouldn't, it wouldn't impact all the schools.
Thank you. Trustee Agnew, you have your hand up?
I just think we, so thank you through you, Madam Chair. I think we need to be cognizant as well that, you know, this could be the landscape of what things might look like moving forward. And, you know, we don't know if and when we'll be back into a traditional, uh, learning environment. We hope that will happen sooner than later. But I think that, you know, a, a lot of organizations have to be prepared that there may be elements that we currently see that could be carried forward even once, uh, COVID-19 is hopefully no longer hanging around. So I think to have the ability to amend, um, things when we need to, to be responsive, specifically for the reason to allow parents to have a voice and not be left out of a process, I think it's important that we have the flexibility and the desire to be able to do that.
Thank you, Trustee Agnew. Trustee O'Hearn Zernotta?
Thank you through you, Madam Chair. And thank you, Trustee Carabella, for bringing up stakeholder feedback. Would it be possible, then, um, for the schools that are just in question to go out to those stakeholders and say, hey, you know, we need to amend the policy? These are the reasons why we want to continue having you move forward with your vote, and get their empowerment and buy into that process?
Director Daley, do you want to?
Yeah, that could certainly be done, but, um, there is a little bit of a time limitation. You know, uh, the, the policy does say that we try and get this done by March, I think. There, the process has to be completed by March 30th. We don't have another policy or, while we've got a board meeting next week, but we'd have to bring it back to policy in January. It becomes a bit of a, a tight timeline.
Thank you, Director. Could I have a follow-up, Madam Chair?
Absolutely.
Uh, what about just feedback from the Catholic school, their Catholic councils, who are to be the voice of their parents? That might be, um, help with the timeline?
Director Daley?
Yeah, not knowing when the next council meetings would be, but that's, that could certainly be a possibility. I, I'm not, well, again, yeah, I, I don't, I, I don't know why, or I couldn't envision a reason why a council would not want to have the vote as widely spread as possible. But, um, certainly, that, that's a, that's a good suggestion.
Thank you, Director Daley. I still have post-traumatic stress syndrome from one, um, vote we had way back when. So I'm very careful.
Fair enough.
Trustee Murphy, have a question?
Uh, more of a comment. I think to build on what Trustee Agnew had mentioned, the expectation in our society moving forward is, is to more accessibility, more on-demand, less in-person, less scheduled, uh, meetings, what have you. I think, I think moving forward, all of our outreach to parents needs to have an element where it's, uh, where it's an online or virtual response. I, I think it's just, it's just good practices, and that's, that's pretty realistic. That's the way, uh, our society is moving. So why not start now with this? Because it's timely, it's important, and it's, and it's needed. But I think moving forward, we need to look at all of our, uh, interactions with our parents. And, uh, because it's going to be demanded, that's what people want. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Murphy. Is there any further comments or questions? So, um, I think we need some clarity for Director Daley here because we heard a couple of different things, um, a couple of.
Chair, point of order. I've been on in queue, and I have not been recognized.
Trustee Antumasi, you have the floor.
Thank you through you, Madam Chair. When is our policy on uniform up for review?
We just actually did a review of our poli, our uniform.
What year is it up for review?
Through you, Madam Chair, 2220, 2022-23, Trustee Antumasi.
Thank you. So why could we not just add a clause, which would be the equivalent of an emergency clause or interim clause to deal with this particular, um, scenario that we're faced with? And just add it as a standalone, which would only apply in situations like we're faced with now?
Director Daley, thoughts?
Yeah, I, I don't think we have to do an, an overhaul of the policy. I think it's literally, um, adding another bullet under how, how the, the balloting process goes. And, and we could certainly indicate that, um, it's based on the current situation we're in, like Trustee Antumasi suggested. It's a, it's a, you know, it, I don't know if you put a time limit on it, but, but explain why it's being inserted. I don't think it, it's, it's a huge task. No, I think that's a good suggestion.
Yeah, so we would make it an interim clause that would deal with this particular situation, and it can be added to our current policy as interim.
Director Daley, is that something that, so that was going to be my, um, next comment in moving forward? Actually, I will defer one moment. Trustee Agnew, you have your hand up?
Uh, thank you through you, Madam Chair. As long as we don't put a time limit on it, we don't know when this is all going to be over. And so we could have schools coming. I mean, we don't know what's going to happen. So I would just caution, I, I'm okay with us putting something that's obviously specific to the situation that we're currently in. But, um, and I see that Trustee Antumasi has already put up his hand, so. But just, um, to be mindful that this could go on longer than we think, and there could be other elements that could be affected. So, um, just to keep that in mind.
Trustee Antumasi?
Yeah, no time limit, through you, Madam Chair, no time limit. It would be open-ended, and it would just speak to specific situations.
So, Director Daley, uh, there's been a couple of things here suggested. So I'm, I'm going to put it back to trustees. I've heard a couple of comments that wanting to get stakeholder feedback. So I think we need to, need to look at what the ask here is. The ask is, we have potentially four schools who will be in a position of having a uniform vote. And which means those students who are virtual do not receive the ballot home in the usual manner as prescribed by the policy currently. So Director Daley is looking for an alternative, or suggesting an alternative for those virtual. So the question is, is would be, would we be okay adding a line temporarily to address this? And can it come back as a suggested action item for the next meeting? Without stakeholder feedback, because really, we're not changing anything. We are simply just allowing those parents or those students who are virtual to vote an alternative way. Because currently, the current policy says the only way they can vote is with an actual paper ballot. So I see other hands have gone up, so I'm going to go back in the queue. But just to clarify, Director Daley, did I, is that kind of like a snapshot of what the ask is?
Yeah, and I mean, we could come back with a couple of options, I guess. I don't think there's a ton of options, but, um, yeah, that, that all makes sense.
Okay. So, uh, Trustee O'Hearn Zernotta?
Thank you through you, Madam Chair. And I really, I feel very strongly that at some point, that whether it not be all stakeholders of the schools involved, or just the Catholic School Council, or just the council chair, that someone gets the ability to have a voice and maybe assist or confirm the process so that they don't feel like they didn't know what's happening.
Okay. Thank you, Trustee O'Hearn Zernotta. Trustee O'Brien?
Thank, thank you through you, Madam Chair. I really do respect the whole stakeholder feedback, um, policy, um, belief. However, I, I believe here there is, um, there is an equity issue, um, in this time. There are simply parents who are, and children who are immune to compromise, families that are immune to compromise. So to deny them a vote, I, I would, um, think we could skip this fee, uh, stakeholder feedback in this instance, with this with a temporary phrase. I think we should keep this on track and not let it be delayed. And, um, that, to me, is the most important thing. It's just a whole equity piece. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee O'Brien. Trustee Agnew, did you have your hand up, or was that just a comment?
Um, no, I did not. Just a comment.
Thank you. Trustee DeRosa?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I would just like, I mean, if the end, if, it's just the, the, the special situation that we have, and it's just, um, another means of getting to the same end. I would, I would think that we need to give it consideration to the special circumstances we find ourselves in and accommodate, accommodate what people need to do the easiest way possible. So, uh, maybe I'm oversimplifying this, but it seems pretty simple to me. Okay, thanks.
So again, I'm going to go back and ask the question on whether we can get consensus on whether or not we want, okay, sorry.
No, sorry. I was probably going to go the same place you were going, is, does the director need a motion from us? Like, what do we need to just, um, get this done so we can move this forward and not delay? Because the sooner that we can make a decision on this amendment and have this done, the sooner we can communicate that out to families, actually, which I think would satisfy, while we're not going out for stakeholder consultation, we're providing ample time to communicate, um, this, this, um, this change of, um, or this additional method of voting. And I think that would help satisfy, um, some of the concerns around parents not having the information in enough time. So I'd like to move on this as quickly as we can.
Absolutely. So that was, my question was, I think Director Daley needs direction from us if we want him to go out to stakeholder feedback or just to come back with the changes, suggested changes. Director Daley, I see you have your hand up?
I, I was just going to say, um, I'm not sure we need, well, I mean, obviously, I'm going to take the direction of trustees. I think all we need to agree is that we'll put it as an action item at the next meeting. That, that'll expedite the process. In terms of, like, I'm, I'm fairly clear in hearing what trustees have suggested, and, and we can bring back an option or two in terms of how the vote would actually be administered. But, but I think it's, from a timing perspective, it's more just to ensure that it, um, that, that trustees do deal with it, um, at our next policy meeting. So we can get it on the next, bring it to the board meeting following that.
Perfect. Okay. Done. Thank you, Director Daley. We're moving on to Item 6, Information Items. Item 6.1, you will see these are upcoming agenda items. Just an FYI, Policy II-I-1-1 Hiring and Promotion Policy. That has remained on the agenda because the, uh, we thought we would receive the recommended, uh, information from the minister in time. However, it hasn't, so it's still on the agenda, uh, to potentially be on the upcoming agenda. We had no procedures that were linked to any of the policies that were reviewed. And Item Number 7, Miscellaneous Information, there is none. Eight, there's no need to go back into camera. Item Number 9, we have no committee members absent. And Item Number 10, can I get a motion to adjourn? By Trustee O'Brien, and seconded by Trustee DeRosa?
Yep.
Anybody opposed? Nobody's opposed to go home. Meeting is adjourned. I would ask, uh, Trustee Murphy to lead us in our closing prayer.
We'll start with a sign of our faith, in the name of Father, Son, and Holy Spirit. Amen? Awesome God, as we leave this meeting, we put our trust in you. We hope continually in you and praise you more and more. Be our guide in everything that we do, and lead us to the rock that is higher than us. Help us to abide in your word, and let it guide us in all that we do. We shall continue to look up to you because we know that you are our shepherd, and we shall not be lacking. In Jesus's name, we believe. In Jesus's name, we believe and pray. Amen. In the name of the Father, Son, Holy Spirit. Amen.
Murphy, and thank you, everybody. Have a great evening.
Thank you, trustee Murphy. Thank you, trustee Guza.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Everybody, good night.
Good night.